Good evening, everyone. The Town Council meeting for January 15th is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Boncory.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Michael McDuffie, who passed away about a week ago. I'll have some comments along with maybe some of the other members of the council after we take a pause. Thank you. Please be seated. Suspending the rules this evening, kind of out of sequence, and I'd like to say a few words about Michael, and I'll ask if there's any counselors that would like to say a few words first, I'd like to let them go.
So, it's been an incredibly sad beginning to the year with Michael's passing. It just reminds us how precious life is and what's really important. A year ago last week, Mike became a member of the Town Council and brought some highly important traits to this party. He was a thinker, a listener, and a worker. And he was willing to do whatever it took to get up to speed on whatever issue it happened to be. He wasn't here for any other reason than to help this town, which he loved so much. I feel so fortunate to have been able to get to know Mike so much better over the past year and to see what a genuine and sincere man he was. I've had the pleasure of knowing Mike's incredible wife, Joanne, for over 45 years. And my heart goes out to her, her children, Michael and Samantha, her grandchildren, and all of Mike's family and friends. I pray for them and thank them for sharing him with us this past year.
Thank you, Jim.
I agree fully with what Counselor Terry said. Michael came onto this council a year ago with no ulterior motives. He came on the council to try to help, to make Winthrop a better place. And I think everything he did, every question he asked, every motion he made, every conversation we had, was always about trying to make Winthrop a better place. He was a great addition to our council. He will be missed, and please remember him and his family in this town. Thank you.
Anyone else? Michael?
I don't think there are any words that I can come up with to do Mike's life justice and what he meant to all of us. But there was something that really struck me the other day that I saw and remind me exactly of how Mike lived his life. It's the parable of the starfish. And for those of you who have never heard it before, it's an old man walking along the beach, and he sees in the distance what seems to be a young boy picking up rocks and skipping them in the water. And by the time he gets close to the young boy, he realizes that the young boy is picking up starfish at low tide and throwing them back into the water. And the old man says to the young boy, you know, "Why are you doing this? You can't possibly save all the starfish. What does it matter?" And the young boy looks at him and says, "It matters to this starfish," and he throws that one in. And I think that is a perfect example of how Mike McDuffie lived his life, whether or not you knew him for 62 years or 62 seconds, you knew he was a great guy, and he was there to help. And he treated every person he met as like a wonderful individual and lit up that room. And that's, I think, what our community will always remember him for.
Anyone else? Nick?
I hadn't got the chance to meet Mike before, serving with him on the council. And I remember looking him up on Facebook beforehand and seeing that his national politics were very, very different from mine and thinking to myself, "My God, I'm going to have to sit next to this guy at council meetings." Then I got to know Mike and find out that our local politics were very much in sync. See, Mike never had a scheme or a personal interest at play when it came to local issues. He had one guiding principle, and that was do what was best for the town that he loved. He was a man of honesty and integrity, of thoughtfulness and of compassion and empathy for his fellow human. And it was that empathy that gave him one of his greatest powers, and that was the ability to connect with anyone, regardless of who they were, or where they came from, or what their national politics were. He could cut through the BS with one raise of his eyebrow, as he did with me on more than one occasion. I only knew Mike for a year, but I had the privilege and honor to call him my friend. He didn't talk about his values; he lived them every day. He's nothing short of an inspiration to me to be a better counselor and to be a better human by learning from his example. He may be gone, but his presence lives on, on this council and in this community as a guiding light to raise the bar for our fellow humans and do great things together for the town that we all love.
Thank you, Nick. Anyone else? Heather?
I echo a lot of what Counselor LaCante just said. Mike McDuffie is one of the most thoughtful people I've ever met in my whole life. And he approached, you know, he considered every issue before the council so carefully and listened with an open mind to everybody's points of view. And I just, I learned a tremendous amount working with him this last year, and I'm going to miss him terribly.
Peter?
I too, I think. I first learned about Mike not on Facebook, but more on the old site Whispering Winthrop, which I got a similar take on. But Mike was one of the only people on that site who put the name on everything. In a lot of ways, Whispering Winthrop was worse because you couldn't put your, a lot of people wouldn't put their names on things, but Mike always did. And over the years, I got to know him, I knew him more as Sam's dad than anything else because I went to school with his daughter. And I got to meet him, and, you know, I was always shocked to somebody who had such opinions that were so different than me, that was just so open-minded and willing to talk with me and get my perspective on things. And I hope I had the same impression on him. And I can't rival what a lot of the people in the community have said about Mike as a person because I didn't know him as a person, like so many other people of his generation knew him and his family. But as far as my work on the council, I really saw Mike as sort of like a guiding compass in a lot of the ways that I looked at things because I know that Mike brought a lot of biases in, and I brought a lot of biases in. And I always find myself trying to find, you know, wanted balanced interests, one after another after another. And Mike had this innate ability to just see right through it. And he could, he didn't need to do that. He was somebody who, if you had, if you had a position that you were bringing, he was absolutely able to see through it and say, "This is the right direction for the town." And that was a talent that he had better than just about any political person that I've ever, I've ever met, and I've dealt with a few. And I was envious of him of that at the time, and I'm envious of him about that today. And I'm sure I'm not the only one who feels like we are going to be at a disadvantage because we no longer have that. I can't ask Mike what his position is on that, this anymore and why, because his thought was, he was so clear about what he wanted and the direction the town wanted to go. And we will be lesser town for that. And I thank him for the one year, and I'm so happy that I got to spend the time that I did with him and become his friend and work with him. So, thank you.
I didn't know Mike prior to being on the council, and I found that hard to believe because he was in the roofing business for many, many years, and so was my husband. And as we talked about it after he passed, people started to remember Mike and, you know, and over the years, all the fine and this and that, and, you know, jobs and so forth. But I knew Mike just from the council, and he was a very kind, very soft-spoken man. I could tell he was a very caring and loving husband and father. We spoke a lot about his wife when she was ill and how he always rallied and gave her such positive, you know, attitude, trying to keep her spirits up. I mean, he respected others. He respected their opinions, their ideas. He was a non-confrontational person, just a really, really nice guy. And I'm going to miss him too because he was, really was, a true gentleman.
Thank you. You know, I've been involved in politics or an elected official in this community for, should I say, over 40 years. And I have certainly worked with many, many, many good people. I've seen a lot of people come and go in terms of running for public office. Some of them had agendas, some of them didn't. But I, Michael McDuffie was certainly the most unique character that I have ever met that got involved in this community. He was, as someone mentioned, when he came into a room, he kind of lit up the room. He was an honest guy, loyal, smart, funny, sincere, genuine, always asking the right questions before he makes a decision. It was just, as I mentioned before, a very, just a wonderful breath of fresh air. We had a great send-off for him last Friday. And I just hope that we all keep Joanne and Michael and Samantha in your prayers, in his parents, in his brother, and his sisters. Because Michael left his mark in Winthrop forever. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Raymond?
Here.
Counselor Callan?
Present.
Counselor Christopher?
Here.
Counselor Cherry?
Here.
Counselor Sardo?
Here.
Counselor LaCante?
Present.
Vice President Boncory?
Here.
Present.
Present. I want to entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the December 18th Town Council meeting.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. We have no general information, no public hearing, public comment. Yes, ma'am. Karen?
Hi, Karen Chomsky, Precinct Two. This evening, the agenda again tonight is a request for $20,000 towards the fire station feasibility study. I thought the feasibility study was done. I, what I'm not understanding is why we're into another year and nothing has been done. We don't have anybody saying, "Yes, we can do a public safety building," or, "No, we can't. We only can do a fire station." In 1992, when I first joined the advisory committee, there was a gentleman by the name of Frank Palmeroy, who used to come to every single town meeting and give a report on the new fire station. That was 1992. And here we are now in 2019, and we still aren't even close to having a fire station. I think it's about time, and I hate to, after all your comments, vote, Mr. McDuffie, I hate to be so downtrodden, but I think it's about time that the council really takes the bull by the horns and says, "Enough is enough. We need a station. These firemen deserve it." They go out and they risk their lives for us. I think we, as a community, owe them a nice place to go to work every day. And I'm not forgetting the police because I'm not sure that a public safety building is in order. If it is, certainly include them. But if it isn't, maybe at the same time, somebody can look at the police station and say, "We can do this, we can do this," to make that a better place for them.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Mr. President?
Yes, Tom.
Tom Riley, President of Precinct Five. I prepared some text for what I wanted to say tonight, but I'm going to start with what was going to be at the end because I'm not sure that it is going to fit in the three minutes allowed. The request at the end of my comments were going to be the request of the council to take control of the review of the center zoning petition. We've gone on for a long period of time. Nothing's happened. We haven't, I think it's time for the people, the decision makers, to put together some form, either refer to a standing committee or create a committee. There's only five people left that were going to be able to vote on this, the refusals. But, and start the whole public meetings on the matter involving everybody. And this time, give a voice to the residents that was lacking when the things were adopted in 2014. Go back to the beginning of what I had. A year and a half ago, a lot of the residents learned about the CBD, the 2004 zoning. One of the first concerns was the map. The map included the residences. So, the buildings that would be in the residential district weren't going to be subject to the lower limits that were in the zoning act for buildings that were adjacent to residential districts. Residential districts are two and a half stories. Yet, we go to meetings and we find out that the position of the town was that you could rip the building by pushing in the third floor and the fourth floor and build four. We also know that the property owners, both property owners, that were on property in intersections of Cottage Park Road and Somerset Avenue, were told that four stories was permissible in those positions. So, we saw the council's review. It started coming up here in the late summer of 2017. Finally, in May, we filed a petition to amend the zoning act. The provision under the charter, under which that petition was filed, required action by the council in three months. We knew that that was problematic, came back and said, "Listen, fob something, have a review, put together something in some fashion, in some way." On December 4th, he came to the technical meeting and asked for a review, and then subsequently asked a couple of questions. I sent an email to the town manager and to the council, saying that I understand, stood at the December 4th meeting, that this matter was going to be referred and the planning board and the Board of Appeals were going to be utilized for the review. I asked, "When will the review begin? Will there be joint meetings of the two boards? Is there a schedule for the completion of the recommendation?" And said, "If there is a schedule, the council will vote to postpone action on the still pending amendment." Never received an answer. There's nothing scheduled. There's nothing on the schedule, on the town calendar, shows nothing for any kind of meetings by those boards that address this subject matter. I think we've stalled on this thing long enough. The council's the decision makers. Let's get it to the council. Let's not go through review committee. Let's go straight to the people who have the authority to make decisions on this then. Give us a hearing. Give us an opportunity to speak. Give everybody that's vested interest in this an opportunity to speak and let's finalize the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
Michael Demento, Precinct Two. I request that the council tonight direct the town manager to hire a camera piping crew to survey the sewer pipes on Palmira Street. Lived on that street for over a decade. Everyone on this board has received an email from me, maybe one, two, three, four, over the last week and a half. The town manager and the DPW director told me that routine maintenance was performed, not last Friday, the Friday before, at around eight o'clock at night. My opinion, that's not routine maintenance. That Sunday night, nine o'clock at night, again, routine maintenance. Routine maintenance, in my opinion, is not done on the weekends and the evening. Let's find out what's blocking the pipes on Palmira Street and solve the issue instead of constantly sending out DPW at an overtime weekend rate to flush out the pipes. And on a side note, yes, you've all read your emails. Mr. Manager also read his. My house is getting filled with sewer gas every time they. I had the plumbing inspector out to my house to look at my pipes. Said my pipes are fine. So, let's find out what the problem is blocking the pipes, the sewer pipes. Let's solve the issue. So, I request that this board direct the town manager to direct the DPW director to solve the issue instead of fixing little problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes.
Jean Coughlin, Precinct Five. Hi, everyone. Happy New Year. Sorry for the loss of Mike McDuffie. You'll be missed. Anyway, I just want to bring up just a couple of things. I went to Planning Board last month, and you all know, I've been over and over asked about the map, about the zoning, about the lines around people's houses. And people tell me it means nothing. I still have anxiety about it. I worry about that. I don't sleep well at night thinking about it. They still are there, even though people tell me, "Don't mean anything." I feel like they're there for a reason. I went to Planning Board last month. I know the agenda was kind of, they were supposed to present, the developers. They canceled at the last minute, but I just felt like, I don't want to miss something if people tell me, "Oh, you might, you know, you missed it back in 2014 when something was in the paper." I guess I missed. I don't want to miss anything, so I presented. And I was all by myself that night. I asked if I could speak publicly. And Mr. Cipuleta was here, her attorney. So was Mr. Rodriguez, too. Rodriguez sat in the back and listened. And I asked them, I said, "Please, can you do the right thing? Can you figure this out? Can you help us?" And we thought we got our answer, yet Mr. Cipuleta is asking the lawyers for the town to come up with an answer about boundary lines and zoning. So, I think we really need to figure that out before we move forward. I know we need to move forward. But I think we need to figure out the zoning and what to do with these things and put people at ease. And I thought we got our answer a year ago from town manager DeLaHanti, saying that no one or two-family home resident was next to a building, they couldn't go up. It was going to be 35 feet, two and a half stories. Building inspector agreed, everybody agreed, yet I still see people like looking for the answer again because Planning Board was asking the town to come up with the answer again. So, we keep getting an answer, but we keep looking for more answers that maybe it will change. I don't think it will change, but I think that we need to make it decisive and put it, you know, intact, and then everybody can proceed and know the laws. I just want people to abide by them, just like we all do. You know, we pay our taxes, we abide the law, we're good citizens. We just want to be heard and represented and have the right thing done by us and for the town. So, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
And I hope that we'll move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just on the point of what Jean was saying, why can't the town council or town manager send out a copy of the zoning bylaw map, as it is now, to all the abutters and all the residents that are in the area of the center? Why shouldn't they have a hard copy of whatever the overly district happens to be in graphic form so they can see what it is? I mean, it exists or not? I mean, the last zoning map that was done by the town was done by US rule in 1907.
If you'd like to, it's up to you.
And the zoning map has not been updated as far as it is.
Okay. So, I can address everything because if we're going to keep talking about this. First off, Winthrop adopted zoning, did not codify a map. That is Winthrop's own problem from the past, that no one wanted to adopt a map because no one wanted to have a conversation about what was actually a butter. The former manager spoke frequently to anyone looking to develop in that square that the abutters were the residents, the single-family homes, and not the businesses within the district. So, that is how the former manager. That said, no map was ever codified. That is what has happened. That is how many developers have come to this town, and that's how it was sold to them. So, what I am trying to do in my office is trying to clean up some of these things that Winthrop put themselves in the situation for. So, first thing, we're going to reengage the master planning process. That is the cleanest document to go back to that talks about the intent and public process that is going to go forward in Winthrop. We're already talking with Form and Place, and we just got a quote from them yesterday about the work that they would do to add almost an addendum to the master plan because, as I've said multiple times in the past at Winthrop, you all are great at making plans and engaging in the public process, and then you stop. You make a plan and you don't do anything with it. So, what we're going to try to do is reengage with this process because you all already went through this process. You have a couple hundred-page document that's sitting on my desk that we don't need to relitigate. What we need to do is reengage with that process, make sure we're all on the same page, and go forward with it. So, with that, there will be a map so we can stop talking about a map. Because to me, it is, as a professional, I don't know how you make zoning without a map. You talked about a district and you never made a map because no one voted on a map. Not put in fault with anyone. It's just something that kind of goes hand in hand. So, we are reengaging with Form and Place to start this process kind of anew. Over the next few months, they will have public meetings about these things. We will be talking about height limitations, site setbacks, all those types of things. In terms of the middle school site, we will be looking at the middle school site if that falls within the center business district, or we want to do an overlay with that as well. We are working on all of these things. In terms of the citizens' petition, respectfully, you know, I like civic engagement. I don't think a citizen's petition should be hung over the heads of a council for long term, so I've actually asked the council to indefinitely table the citizens' petition because this is work that's being worked on. I know that we're not necessarily answering it in the way of a citizens' petition, but we are working on this center business district. Right now, what's on the table for us outside of getting the zoning in place and a map is the infrastructure project is happening. That work will be bid out in the next few months. And the project at the Family Dollar site, regardless of the map, that building needs a variance. It needs a height variance, a site setback, and a parking variance. So, what needs to happen simultaneous to all of this is the planning board says, "No, you do not meet what we need." Then they go to the zoning Board of Appeals and appeal for specific things concerning their building permit in terms of height, site setbacks, and things like that. So, they need a variance whether they're in a butter or they're within the district so they can continue along the path that they are already on because we have zoning language in place. And zoning board, or the planning board and the Board of Appeals need to make decisions instead of kicking some of these things down the road. So, we are trying to facilitate as quickly as possible so everyone can get on the same page and start moving forward. And we have a map in place so we can actually talk to developers and have everyone playing with the same information on the level playing field.
Your Honor?
Yes. Justice Freddie Bryan, Precinct Five, for Conne Park Road. The town manager referred to process, that there was a process, a 150-page document, whatever it was, that came out of the, was it the municipal?
It was, the public document that's on the website, it was MIPC Mass Development and Form and Place all came here and did multiple public meetings about this. This is not something that they just sprung.
We know that now. We know that now, to use an expression from a funny movie. But we were not involved in that process. There was flagrant omission of contacting residents.
And I apologize for that, and what we're doing is trying to do this.
And we're not saying it's your fault, sir. You know, we're not. But we're saying the work process brings, you know.
I understand that these things run hollow because of actions of the past. That's not what I'm doing. I've been, my entire time here, I've been as transparent and upfront as possible, and I will put all of these decisions in your hands. I don't care what goes in the center business district. What I want is for Winthrop to be a functional government in the long term, and I will help guide Winthrop in that direction, and I will work with your elected officials to help them make decisions. At the end of the day, I'm agnostic on what goes there. I want what people here want there. So, if everyone can come together and decide on some zoning and vote on things, let's vote on something. Unfortunately, sometimes it's going to be 50% plus one person, and that other 49% is going to just have to deal with the decision. But what we need to do is make a document that we're all on board with and move forward. Like I said, a lot of plans here, a lot of inaction as well. And what I want to do is take those plans into action. Like I said, you all did a public process previously with this, although you may not have had all the public meetings you wanted to. I will bring the public meetings back so we can reengage this process. If it all comes out the same, good, we've had the public process. I want to reengage the public process in this so that everyone feels like they've had the opportunity to have their voice heard and advocate for their individual concern.
But it comes back to zoning. It really comes back to zoning.
The zoning has already been voted on.
We know that now. Okay. Again, but it was not, it was not privy to us back when these meetings were going on, even though they were posted somewhere. It wasn't in a way that any of our neighbors or small businesses were aware. So, it comes back to zoning. And again, I'm saying that we need an answer to our appeal of the 2014 zoning, you know, with the appeal that we submitted, I think it was May 27, expecting an answer at least by the end of August. Because it all comes back, whether it's a map, or Jean's house, or Mrs. Bayes's house, or whatever.
So...
We need definition.
The zoning has already been decided. The zoning was codified.
I'm not done. Excuse me. I'm sorry. I don't, I hear people, you know, but I just want to finish what I need to say in the public process. It comes back, you know, to the zoning. We need a definition. Are we going to work with this zoning? Or are we going to work with a repealed and amendment and amended zoning? What's the zoning? Because the zoning is going to dictate, you know, what happens. Not just in Winthrop Center, but it's going to kind of be a precedent of what may occur in different parts of the town.
Absolutely.
The second point, though, that we were, we had heard through the years and prior to your hearing, and I'm not blaming anybody here, but that the town planner, you know, we were going to get a town planner, and I think we heard this about a year and a half ago. And I understand Mr. Rodriguez is your assistant and has a lot of background in town planning. Could I ask, you know, and I'm not sure if this would be appropriate form for that, but what's the status of, of, you know, the planner assessing and seeing what the town of Winthrop would best look like?
We are, so we don't have an actual planner. A planner was never budgeted for. A planner was discussed in the budget process but never allocated founding for. There was discussions about the intent of the Assistant Town Manager position, if that should be a planner or an Assistant Town Manager. I see that role as more beneficial as an Assistant Town Manager. So that's why I hired as such. He has planning experience to work with these types of projects. And we have outside counsel to also help us with planning. We are currently trying to assess if we think we need, in addition to that, to bring on a planner full-time to work through some of the particulars of a few of these things. Going back a little bit, though, in what you said, this council voted on zoning previously. You all have this. It was a public meeting. It was voted on previously. The map was not codified. That is where your language issue comes into play, because you refer to a district that you did not make a map for. So that's the problem. You made zoning and you voted it. You never voted a map to say, this is what parcel is in that zoning, and this parcel is outside of that zoning. So that's why we're going to reengage this public process to make sure, this is what we have in the books. Is everyone okay with this? This was already voted on and went through a process previously. Are we still okay with it? If we need to make changes, what do we need to make changes for? And then also a map. So, like I said...
Okay. So the amendment and repeal might be an option here, is what you're...
Absolutely. If that's what the public process dictates.
You've offered me an answer, and I appreciate that.
If that's what the public process dictates. That said, these are things, like I said, voted on previously by this council. So I understand that people may not have been given the opportunity to engage in the process. But when this type of board has to vote on zoning, it's a major thing. They need two-thirds for it. It's not something that happens willy-nilly and just is changed. So that's why I feel like it's hard to go down, there was no process with the zoning, because from everything I look back on, there was some type of process. It may not have resulted in what people like or engaged as much in the community as I would have. That said, there was a process that happened previously, and zoning was voted on, and a map was not codified. So, although I agree with what Terry was trying to do previously with expressing the opinion of a legal, I'm sorry, legal counsel, he also did not proper a map of, this is what the Center Business District is. It was, here is an opinion about certain residences on certain roads, in opinion. Again, not the actual map, not delineating parcels. Like, we needed to go a step forward, a step further at multiple points during this to come up with a map. And again, stop this discussion about a map. You made a master plan and spent a lot of money on it, and outside money to come up with a document that then everyone doesn't like when it's made. Which is a true planning document, like no one ever likes those when other people do them. That said, a lot of time and effort was put into that document, and then the first thing people turn to is a map that they disagree with. So, we're trying to reengage this process again so that everyone can feel like they're involved.
With the possibility of amending or modifying what went down into the town, am I correct to assume that?
Everything is on the...
All right. Thank you so much for your reply.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Sit down.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to start the process over, the process that was begun in 2014. There's a petition to start the process over. I'd like you to address that petition. It seems like the Town Manager does not want to address that petition, but I'd like to see that done. The Town Manager just mentioned that the building on Somerset Ave that was proposed to be built would probably have to go through the Board of Appeals in order to make changes and setbacks in height restrictions. But I believe it's the Planning Board that the developer goes to petition to make those changes. Do you know that to be correct?
No, that is not correct.
I think you'd better look at it closer.
I have reached out to outside counsel, and we have met in many discussions about this. The interpretation of the...
A bunch of Planning Board meetings.
The Planning Board's interpretation that they are both the authority that makes decisions and then also the appeal authority is incorrect.
Thank you.
That is not how any of these boards and commissions should be set up. They make a decision, and then you go to a Board of Appeals.
So that language is not in the 2014...
It is not. That is the interpretation of Planning Board members right now. Outside counsel has advised us.
That is the interpretation of the Planning Board, that they are the appeals for people to go to, to make changes in height.
Yes, and that is incorrect.
Meaning, is it on the books that, in the ordinances, that they are the appeals for the Center Business District?
No, it is not. No.
No? Thank you.
Again, this is checks and balances of government. You don't want the same person hearing an appeal to a decision that they previously made. That was...
Well, when I mentioned that, when I mentioned that at the Planning Board meetings, they told me that they were the Board of Appeals for the Center Business District.
And they are incorrect in that interpretation.
Kathleen?
Hi, Kathleen Capuccio. I was getting my precincts. Waldemar Ave in Winthrop. I'm actually going to address something different, which is the middle school, but I do need to address something that Mr. Town Manager just said. And I think I have this done accurate or written accurately. I don't care what goes in the Center Business District. I have so many opinions on that comment, which I will leave or leave to another time. It is your job to care what happens to this town, and what goes in this town, and what development happens. If you don't care, this is not the right job for you. That's exactly what you said. That, again, because we're very clear about public hearings. This is not one. This is public comment. That's disgraceful. That's exactly what you said. I'm horrified by that statement. What I want to talk about is verge off the CBD. I live on Waldemar Ave, and the old middle school has been vacant since November of 2013, when many of us members of the council, we worked on, you know, getting the old middle school in, or I'm sorry, the voting on the new middle high school. So, I'm just urging the council to please. And again, I know there's differences, differences, or, whatever the words, responsibilities within the charter, as what the council's responsibility is and what the Town Manager's responsibility is in respect to development of properties. Guys, we're five years and two-plus months out. We have operational and insurance costs for over five years for this middle school. I'm not going to go back to history because some smart people have told me, don't do that. It doesn't make sense. I had a wonderful email exchange with Mr. Rodriguez, the Assistant Town Manager, today. Responded to me very quickly about the email I sent. And he seems very engaged in the process and getting, you know, kind of restarted what's going to happen. But please, if we can pay attention to the old middle school, and I love Mr. Rodriguez, and I hope that I can say this, but again, it's all public record, I guess. He said, this is one of, again, I'm not quoting, "One of the most exciting projects in Winthrop." Can we get excited? Can we do something, please, with the old middle school? I'm not sure if I'm a legal abutter. I haven't looked. I'm six stories down on Waldemar, so maybe I am. But I'm asking the council, within your purview, what you can do. Please instruct the Town Manager, and again, Mr. Rodriguez seems very excited about getting involved, to do something with the middle school, please. And I'll just end with this again because I'm so frustrated. Mr. Manager, you need to care about everything that happens within this town. Whether it was someone's history or not, you need to care. And you just showed with that statement your lack of credibility on that. Thank you.
Nixiolis, precinct five. I think Mr. Faison and Mr. Vecchia have come in probably the toughest jobs that anybody could come into. Mr. Vecchia, winning an election by fourteen votes. Mr. Faison, really coming into a community that is hurt, have lost trust. I will go back to 2014, and I will speak honestly. In 2014, democracy in Winthrop was at its lowest point. Because major ordinances that were changed, that have impacted everybody in here, and I mean impacted, people can't sleep, people have anxiety, their lives are upside down, lines are being drawn around their homes, okay? Some people are scared. It was never, and we were never included in the process. When people are not included in the process, democracy is at its lowest abyss. Now, everything that was passed, was passed, and we don't know exactly who voted for it, what exactly transpired. But we know, and I know Mr. Faison, being a professional who came from a great town, Brookline, knows that no council would ever pass such an impact, impact zoning without sending somebody out to survey the people, to see what the residents want, to see what was going on. That did not happen.
That's right.
And I will say it again. The residents did their own quality-of-life presentation, and thank you, Mr. Vecchia and the other counselors, and Mr. Faison for putting that up on the website. That presentation nailed it. It covered everything on there, and nobody's really looking at it. It is an impact statement and an impact presentation that we surveyed over a hundred residents. I hope somebody, when they're up for discussions, do look into what the residents want to have, because we have talked to one developer, and we get along very well with him. And in addition to that, I want to say that the repeal was signed by residents of this town. They're all voters. They signed that to balance the playing field. This is democracy in action. And Mr. Riley's presentation was a professional presentation. It was supposed to have been addressed within thirty to sixty days. When something is not addressed, it enables the developers to come in here and say, look, there's a repeal down there. No one's even looking at it. We'll be doing what we want in Winthrop. No. We do not want to lose our beautiful jewel of a town. Something went drastically wrong in 2014. If you go back to the articles that our reporters have covered, 2017, December meeting, right in the transcript says, there were mistakes made. And the council said it, there were mistakes made. However, despite the mistakes, it has impacted us today. We are paying the consequences for those mistakes. And I hope that the council, under the leadership of Mr. Vecchia, Mr. Faison, can get together and really have a process that includes the residents, that includes the abutters, that includes the neighborhoods, that includes the beautiful history of Winthrop. So we do not end up being a metropolis and an urbanized town and a gentrified town where people have to leave this town who've been here fifty, sixty years because they can't pay their taxes. And the last note I want to say is, like, Duffy was a friend of mine, his memory be eternal.
Anyone else that should be heard. Hearing done, we'll close out the public comments section. We have no correspondence. Committee reports, Finance Committee. Mr. Chairman?
Finance Committee met this evening. Council Chairman is president, with myself, Consul Lacante, Consul Christopher in the committee, also Consul Ingram, Consul Aron Clory, and Town Manager Faison. Thank you for coming. And this will address maybe some of Karen's concerns or comments from earlier. I think, well, we think as a committee that the way this was brought to us almost looked like, and one of my first questions when I got this was to text our esteemed Council Clerk, Ms. West, to ask her, saying, how many studies have we done? Why are we doing another study? And my response is, this is not another study. This is a continuation of the fiscal year 2016 study that was appropriated by the council for $25,000. That money has not been spent. There have been discussions as to which way to go, which direction to go. And now they have affirmed the price could go up to $45,000. We do not think it's going to be that much to do this feasibility study. And we do want to include not just fire station, but a police to look at a potential joint venture or to look at one or the other. So this is a continuation of the fiscal sixteen request that was put into the council. So it is not an additional feasibility study. This feasibility study is ready to be signed, sealed, and delivered, and it will get underway very soon. I think the Town Manager is very focused, and I believe he agrees with your concerns that we have let this go too long and that something needs to be done. So, as a committee member, I guess my response is that the committee voted unanimously to approve positive action on this, and it will be taken up in Old Business. And that was the only agenda item on the Finance Committee. I don't see, can I make a quick statement on the Millifield Committee?
Sure. Absolutely.
Millifield Committee met last evening, and the vocational school's been on vacation. They're back now. But they are on schedule. They believe they're on schedule. We had hoped that the roofing structure would be up. We were hoping that the trusses would be in place and the building would be fully enclosed by the end of January. That's probably a couple of weeks behind. However, the Volk feels that they're still on track, so we're not behind technically. They're doing interior walls inside the Field House now. The trusses, we believe, will be installed in the next three weeks. And then the building, the Volk, we are allowing the Volk to come back and do the shingling on the roof. They requested, and we agreed with that. So everything seems to be going on. We might be a couple of weeks behind with the trusses, but everything else seems to be going on pretty well. We made a choice for the siding. The color is, not that, I don't know if anybody cares, but the color is Booth Bay blue with the trim will be white. So everything seems to be going according to schedule. And again, we thank the Volk. They've been outstanding. The teachers have been great, and they've been working with the community. So we thank them for that.
Thank you, Consul of Terry. Town Manager's report?
So briefly, I just passed around my kind of standards that I have for goal setting. This is an activity that I would like to go through with the council, of the council determining what goals they would like represented in the fiscal twenty budget that will be produced in the near future. I would like the council's goals to both reflect the intent of the community, as the community sees through the council, some of their goals, but also reflect some of the specific work that you would like to be done within departments that you think are somewhat achievable goals in the next fiscal year. I will be, I'm currently engaging with the Collins Center to have them come in to work with you all about goal and objective setting type of things and working through the budget. Also talking about the charter and a couple other things. But this will be part of that activity, is kind of going through what you all think are the goals going forward. And that will be in the budgets. Also, we are in the midst of budget creation. Our department heads... Also, we are in the midst of budget creation, our department heads are currently responding to us with their requests, so that we can begin to interpret them and try to produce a balanced document by the end of February. After that, we will go through the larger public process, working with you all, and the Finance Committee do, and as well as the School Committee and the Superintendent, to come up with balanced budgets that we can approve and move forward with. All of that said, you know, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't respond to some of the things that were mentioned in public comment. I am remiss to utilize the words, "I don't care," I regret saying that immediately. That said, what I, my intent is, I am agnostic to what happens within the Center Business District. I am agnostic about the businesses that come there and mixed-use development and things like that. All I want to do is get Winthrop heading in the direction that Winthrop would like to, as well as not see vacant properties in that Center Business District. I was there yesterday to meet with Consulor Lucerto. From my vantage point, I could count over twenty open parking spaces, and many businesses closed. I could not get a, what I wanted to do after meeting with Mike, I couldn't do, because businesses were closed and there are vacant properties. That's not what I want to see, and that is all I'm trying to work with the council on, our planning board, and all of our different commissions and the community, is to make that a vibrant center. I do not know what that vibrant center will look like in the future, I can't say for certain. You see new businesses like Consulor Lucerto's, you see older businesses like Consulor Leteri's. I don't know what it's going to look like in the future, what's going to remain, what new businesses will come. What I will say, though, is that I do not want to see vacant properties there anymore. And that is all I want out of this process. I work for you all, I will continue to support that in that effort, and I will continue to work towards engaging the community and bringing the zoning forth that the community sees fit, and you all see fit as well. With that, that's all I got from my report this week.
Counselor?
Two questions. First, on the goal setting, thank you very much. I know way back when we had our first council president, Tom Riley, one of the first things we did in the first year was we had a goal-setting roundtable, we had it at the old, the DeLeo Center now. It was very informative, it was very helpful to us, and it's something that we got off track, so I thank you for bringing that back. As Precinct Two Consul, I would also ask you to address Mr. Demento's issues, to see if we could come up with some sort of reasoning. If there is any issues down there, I just want to make sure that we've done everything we can on our part as a town.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone else question for the council, for the town manager? Okay. There is no School Department report, we haven't had a School Committee meeting since our last one. Under Old Business, we have a transfer of $20,000. I'll call on the Chair of Finance.
Yes. I move that the council vote the transfer of $20,000 from Capital Stabilization Fund to General Fund Special Article Number 0196052-588116. Fiscal year '16 Fire Station Feasibility Study or take any other action relative thereto. The motion, this came out of committee with positive recommendation, does not require a second.
No second is required, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call. On 20?
Stabilization.
Ah, stabilization, okay. Roll call, please.
Consul Ringman?
Yes.
Consul Calla?
Yes.
Consul Christopher?
Yes.
Consul Lucerto?
Yes.
Consul LaCanti?
Yes.
Vice President Boncorrie?
Yes.
President Vecchia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Old Business, Town Council to establish a transparent TPW reporting workflow and expectation-setting metric. I'll call on Consul Lucerto, we've kept this alive for you.
Yep.
And we'll have a discussion.
We can, I'm going to withdraw that motion, because I know that we're already working on something.
Okay.
The town manager and the DPW director are already working on it, so I'd just like to withdraw that motion.
Just, can I speak to that quickly? Sure. So Director Calla has engaged with a company called C Click Fix. They are a municipal resource that multiple municipalities use as a work order system that both has intake, they can present the work that they've done, and it is a work order system, so we can go back. And really what I'm looking to do is, our department heads are collecting data, they're not collecting data in the way that we can present actionable things to the community, and utilizing resources like C Click Fix and following this mentality across departments, whether it's permitting, licensing, those things. I want to move forward in that direction, just like what I did with OpenGov. I will continue to utilize technology-based resources that are smaller cost than bringing on additional staff to alleviate some of these concerns, so that our budget in the future, in terms of the goals, we set a goal, we have a metric to tie to that, and then at the end of the year, it's, "Did you meet it or not? Yes or no?" Or, "You're close?" type of thing. And then you budget accordingly, type of thing. It's no good to just set goals and not reflect on the goals if we accomplish things, and we don't have data to back it up. So it's all, these things all work in tandem in my mind, and I think of a budget as incomplete if it doesn't include some types of metrics. So I'm working to head in that direction as much as possible.
Thank you. Under New Business, goals and objectives, we've discussed, and council has it. Under the next item, postpone town voluntary petition for the CBD. Town Manager is requesting that we indefinitely table the petition that we took on May 5th, that we recorded on May 5th. Would you like to expand to why we're doing this, why you're requesting it? I know there's been some concern, especially race tonight.
Absolutely.
So I think, I think the council wants to feel very comfortable
Sure.
that their concerns are being addressed if we, in fact, do table this.
Absolutely. So the first step that we took was voting on the finance in the Center Business District. So that is in...
Can we get Michael Paul in here, anything?
Sure. So the first step was in November...
That's much better.
Sorry about that. I know I'm on TV, my fault. So in November, this council voted to approve the financing of the infrastructure in the Center Business District project. We are moving forward with that infrastructure project. I have a managers' committee for that, they are currently meeting, they are not subject to open meeting law, because they are my committee. That said, they will have public meetings to discuss some of the above-ground things and the phasing of the plan once we have a contract. We cannot talk about the exact limitations of phasing until we have a contractor in place, which is after an RFP. Right now, we are going out to have peer review performed on a few portions of the work that's being, that has been presented. Woodard and Kern is also bringing the work to 100% design, and then we will go out, once the managers' committee gives the go-ahead to myself and the council, we will go forward and go out to bid for the infrastructure work in the Center Business District. Concurrently, we have begun to reengage with our outside legal counsel and form in place about the master plan process that happened a couple of years ago. From my read, as I said previously, something was missed in that process. I can't say what it was, but we are reopening the process to make sure that the community is on board with the zoning as currently stated. We come together and determine what the maps are, and we determine how we want to handle the middle school site, if that is part of the same zoning for the Center Business District, is that an overlay district or something called an SDOD, which is a little bit more complicated, or if we deem it an Article X type of property, parcel of land. So there's a few steps to take with that as well, but we are working to get ourselves to the position that we can at least go out for an RFA on that. We want to do something with the middle school site. I know a fair amount of the limitations with the middle school site, there's bad infrastructure there, we have an ice rink attached to a building and dependent on another building, and we currently have our Parks and Rec operating out of there. So I have to work around all of those things and try to come up with a project that the community wants to work with and engage with. So we are working at the same time about the middle school site as well. Then you go a little bit further to Ingleside Park, we have been allocated environmental bond bill money from the state on Ingleside Park right now. Woodard and Kern is doing work concerning a large-scale water storage facility taking place underground there, or a pump station, if, how those would work together. They're doing a feasibility study on that, that should be completed by the end of June. Now, going back with that master planning process, is that what we would like by, hopefully the end of summer, we've told Form in Place that we would like it to be a five-month engagement, we want to come back with an additional 20, 30 pages to the master plan, saying, "This is the 2019 revision to it that we are working off of." It will help inform the planning board, who seem to be confused about some things, it will help inform the Board of Appeals as well, and it will inform the whole community, after a community engagement process, of, "Here's what we think the Center Business District is, here are the parameters that we're setting around it, developers, if you would like to engage, here are the rules that we have." So we're trying to, again, we're trying to just set everyone on the same playing field. Because I've said a lot of times here, what has happened in Winthrop in the past from my viewpoint, is that expectations have been set by the community and not necessarily communicated effectively from the elected officials and people in town government. So we need to all get on the same page of what the expectations are, and then are we meeting them or not? But if we do not set the expectations going in, we can't say after the fact that we met them or not. What I want to do is get everyone, everyone in here, we do not have to keep taking up public comment, talking about the same topics. We want to move forward in determining how we all want to make this look. And the reason why I say "we," I'm including myself, but again, I am going to be here for a limited period of time. You all own property here, you live here, your kids go to school here. It is far more important to me that you all get input in this process than my input. It does not matter in 20 years what I say about the Center Business District, but it matters what you say. It ma, it truly matters what the community says about its own spaces. Because when I want, when I look forward, I want that space activated. I look at how the Greenway is in Boston, I look at different places, I see people walking around during the daytime. Again, when I was there yesterday, I met with Consulor Lucerto at 1:00 PM, three people walking around, and I stood out there for 20 minutes in the cold just to make sure I wasn't being crazy. No one is walking around.
Well, it went on a Monday, so all of... Wait a minute, it went on a Monday, and all the hair salons are closed on Monday, so...
Sorry. Maybe, okay, I will...
That's like nine of the stores.
You're right.
So I'm just saying, that's part of the reason those three people walking around.
Again, I'm being, I'm exaggerating my point.
Well, no, that is my point, though. All the hair salons are closed on Monday.
Okay. Again, so our per capita hair salons that we have here is also very high. There's a fair amount of things that I want the community to reflect on of, "Do we want this to be our community going forward?" Again, this is your community, I want the community engaged in this. It does no good, this is what happened previously, you had a manager who had a lot of skin in the game and had his opinion expressed in these documents and not the community's.
That's right.
And that is what I want, and that is what I want to work towards with everyone. I came here, I feel like I've been straight with everyone my entire time here, is that something without a public process is ineffective to me. That is what I want to take it back, how far back can we go with what's been done to a public process, so everyone gets the chance to get their piece in and they get to engage in this process. It is not that I don't care, it's that I am agnostic. I want the community to drive this.
Month of stats, sir.
The community meetings about, so Center Business District zoning or master planning? So we're, we haven't signed with Form in Place their contract, the number was a little high, so I'm trying to push them back on it. That is something that will be happening in March. So it's not, it is not far away. This is a five-month, we want to tie this up so the community can all have their input and say, "Here's the map, we're all on board with the same map." And because of the failure of that process of the past, I want to reengage that process, and that's what Dave Rodriguez has been working day and night in doing. He's been meeting with the Center Business District Committee, he's been doing all of this work. We are trying to get everything into the same place, because this is, you guys are going to have a lot of work, that's it. Like, it's going to be a fair amount of work in the Center Business District, the middle school, Ingleside, that's a lot for one community to take on, and you have to take on 20 years' worth of work over four, five years. So that's going to be a lot, and there are going to be impacts. And I want the community engaged in this process, because, as I said with the Center Business District, I don't want one business coming to me saying, "I couldn't get my customers in for two months straight, because no one listened to me, and there was nowhere for my customers to park, and there was no way for them to get into my store." I don't want to have that conversation. I want to have the conversation beforehand of, "This is how we're phasing it, this is how we're going to try to minimize impacts, this is where we need you to ask your customers to park for this week, we're shifting it for this week, we're going to have to change the directions of some of the streets, but this will be a public process." We, I, the last time I talked about the Center Business District, I was saying, "How can I best engage with the community?" I think it was at Peter Christopher's meeting. It was, if you're not getting in on Facebook email, the website, things that Terry did previously, what do you, what do you need? How can we get in contact? Because that's what I want to do. If it's a reverse 911, whatever, I want people to know that we're having these meetings, they are public, we want you to engage, because this hurts me to hear people afterwards to say they didn't get to engage in a process. That, that's what government is, it's civic action, it's, we're doing the work that the community wants to be done on their behalf, so I, again, want to facilitate that from happening. So we are, these things are happening, quick. These are, these are a lot of things that will be happening in the next, in the first six months of this year, presumably, but there will be plenty of public meetings, that Center Business District Committee will be meeting publicly when they start talking about some of the above-ground things. Once we get to more of the fun stuff to talk about, they'll be talking about that. Right now, they're doing little peer review type sizes and things like that, that's not fun. But the better stuff, public process. This master plan, public process. The middle school site, public process. Like, it's, none of these things are in my office, getting decided there, and no one else gets input on. Like, that, that's not how I run things, and I will continue to engage the community as much as possible, because you all elect them, they hire me, we're all working together. Like, it's, it's not me to make these decisions, it's the community, and I want to help facilitate these discussions, so everyone can feel like they had a part in it.
Thank you, Austin.
You're welcome.
Peter Christopher.
We're not doing clapping for you there. Yeah. That's quite believable. I, I thank you for bringing this forward, because I think that a lot, this was exactly what a lot of people who signed that petition wanted. I think a lot of people wanted to take things off the books currently and revamp it, because I, I think that there was general consensus that, at the time, the zoning codes weren't working and that we needed to do something to it. What ended up coming out of that probably wasn't what everybody wanted. But I see this as kind of a two-pronged issue. There is, you know, an immediate problem that comes with the border map, that is of the district, and there's also what's allowable within that border map, which I think is something that you definitely need to have more hearings and everything in order to identify that. I have a hard time, I, what I don't think we have any, much debate about is where those lines are. I, I know in, on my street, the buildings that a lot of people are talking about, there's always been a business on one side of what I know this border map to be, and what everybody, I think, knows that border map to be, there's a house on the other side. That's something I think can be done in relatively short order. And I, I would suggest that maybe we track this, whatever we end up doing, because that's a more immediate concern of the neighborhood. Because what I think everybody's fear is with this is that someone at some point is going to come in and build something by right that's with, that they think is allowable, that we disagree with them on. And that is a fear that I think people have, and it could be imminent. So the five-month timeline might work as far as what is allowable in the zoning map, but I don't think, I think that as soon as we possibly can get that map drawn and something passed by the council, that would be to our benefit. And I don't know if, and I hope that that's the approach that we take, I'm a member of that committee, and I'm going to be pushing for some type of quicker action than on, on the others, but that's the way I see it.
So with the map, the only re, I would love to just get a map and put it out there. I agree with you. My issue with doing that is that if we're re-engaging this process, I want to make sure everyone is on board with the zoning on the books before we produce a map, because I don't want to have to produce another map after a public process. So I would like to engage the public to re-codify what they want for the zoning and then develop a map based off of what is codified as well. It's, it's a cart and horse type of thing, from my opinion. I just don't want to get, I don't want to get people up in arms about a map that then is called into question because we're having a public process about the zoning in place for that.
Yeah, I think we'll have a pretty broad consensus on that.
Yep. So, yeah, exactly. I just try to go through the process with everyone, so everyone can...
I know, there were several items in that petition, and one of them was the height, and the other was, was the map, I believe.
As I see it, it's...
So those are going to be addressed in this process.
Absolutely. It's height, sites, back, parking. I mean, it's, these are the fundamental things that go with larger-sized buildings going into a place that were, the buildings were smaller previously. There is a height on the books, again, let's reengage, let's determine if this is the right height, and what does that height mean? Does it mean that's the height of the physical structure plus the HVAC equipment on top of it? There's some things that were done previously that stopped, they, they needed to go a couple steps more, the map being an example, but that, that's the purpose of this process. We want to do this lean and mean as quickly as possible to get it so you have to deal with less questions for your district. Okay? Or present, excuse me.
All right. For the sake of discussion for the rest of the councillors to ask questions, I'm going to make a motion that the Town Council indefinitely table the voluntary petition number two, recorded May 1st, 2018, with the Winthrop Clerk's Office, in reference to the zoning amendment request... Office in reference to the zoning amendment request in the Center Business District. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. Uh, discussion on the motion?
Do you believe if it's zoning, if it's, it's zoning, the rest of us who have been accusing themselves from the Center Business District's discretion have to accuse themselves once again?
I agree.
Is that correct?
I would agree.
Somebody, somebody needs to speak up because we can't hear you.
My point was that, um, for those of us who have been accusing themselves for the Center Business District, even if this is a petition, it obviously affects properties which some of us are located in, which we should also be recused from this discussion, is what I'm trying to say. So, I'm going to do that just out of safety.
And I will do the same. Okay.
I'm not going to.
Okay.
I'm going to sit in the audience, or outside, whichever you prefer.
I think you should go outside too, Neil.
The TV crew's asking me to not be doing this one.
You think we should do it?
Discussion on the motion.
I'm trying to understand the difference as to whether we indefinitely table or just keep it on the agenda until we get this map and we can get something done. I think the map, like Peter Christopher, is the first thing that should be done. We can always change the zoning by law if they think there's an amendment or if the people you are coming in and you're working with think that an amendment needs to be done. We can always lower the height, we can always change that setback within two meetings. But I think the map is something we need to get on the floor first because if the map shows that we're just around businesses, the people on the outside of the map may not have that much concern as to what it says inside the map. And that, I think, is the main concern that people have been questioning for the past three years, is are they in the zone or are they out of the zone? Once we have a specific map line and they know they're out of the zone, they may not have a problem with the zoning that's set as it is when we did the Center Business District.
I agree.
But the question, the question is on indefinitely tabling the petition as opposed to leaving it out there. That's basically what the question is.
And what's the difference? If it's tabled or if it's on the agenda every, every week?
I, I would find it being on the agenda every single week confusing to the public as to what's actually going to be discussed at the meeting. The purpose of the agenda is to give the public clear notice what we're going to discuss so it doesn't make sense to continue to have an item that's not going to be directly addressed. I am in favor of tabling the motion indefinitely.
Is, is that what you feel by asking us to table it?
Absolutely. Anyone else? Nick?
Yes, can we go over exactly what means to vote yes or no on this? That if we were to vote yes to indefinitely table it, then we would be going with your process, Mr. Town Manager?
But if we were to vote no on it, then, and, and that were to pass, then what is the impact
of that?
You're, you're in the same spot that you are right now, that you have an outstanding petition that has not been responded to by your council. Um, I'm trying to, I'm trying to tie this up a little bit.
And can you review exactly sort of what that petition is calling for and what sort of we're obligated to act on in that case?
Sure. Um, so, in the petition, I don't know if I have my memory right here.
Tom, do you have a copy with you?
Can I just, can I just say, while, while we're looking at it, it has been responded to because we did vote to send it to the planning board. The, the, so, council did respond to that petition to start the process because it's with the zoning issue, it has to go to planning board. So, we have taken an action. And would it be better to table it to indicate certain that we know that the map will have to get done by then, the planning board will have to look at it by then, then it can come back to us?
Um, this was intended to be a clerical change because I feel like work is being done on the specific topic with some of the things that, um, I've tasked different department heads with, um, specifically concerning this project. Um, and this was for my intent, a way to alleviate the council from this remaining on your agenda for the foreseeable future, um, to indicate that work was being done internally specific to the topic and not due to the specific time parameters of the petition. The petition itself, as you heard earlier, is referenced as, you had a deadline, you've missed the deadline, people are still waiting for a response, there hasn't been a response. I intended this as a clerical thing to clear things up for the council.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Town Council President, I'm sorry.
Sure, I'm sorry.
I was just hoping to follow up on, so, we haven't responded to this. What are we kind of obligated to do, um, if we do not table it?
You, you can respond in due course if the council sees fit. It's a, it's a petition, it's a, it is a petition to the council. The council can determine if they would like to respond or not. To date, you have not responded. This is a way, with work being done on the topic, to alleviate yourselves of a direct response to the petition.
Council President?
Yes.
Just to follow up on that a little bit, because there is so much work being done internally at Town Hall, it makes sense to get all of that information before we would take any formal action on the petition. The work is being done, it can't be done overnight, we can't, it's not going to be something that's going to be, we're going to be able to vote on in a meaningful way in, in short order. So, it makes sense to table this until we are ready to address it more directly with a complete set of information.
Okay. Anyone else wish to be heard? I'll take a vote. All in favor to table indefinitely, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Nick, can you get the, do your thing first? Okay, I'll call on the Chair of, Mr. Bancorp. Rules and Ordinances.
Yes.
To adopt MGL 100B.
This is the first time it's on the agenda. It hasn't been sent to rules and ordinance.
Yeah. It hasn't been?
Not yet. But... It is, it is, it has been sent, it has been sent to rules and ordinance tonight. However, I think we should hear from our, our HR Director because this is, really, there's not much debate on it. If everybody has read it, we'd probably vote on it without sending it to the committee, except that you can't act on something the first time it's brought up by our charter. It has to go at least over to the next meeting. You can either send it to the committee to review it, to make a recommendation, or we can just send it to the next meeting for an actual vote on it, but it can't be voted on the same night it's brought up for its first time.
Okay.
It is an adopting master of law that's already there, uh, and either we say yes or no, we want to help our retired firemen and our retired police officers, but you can explain it better, Stacy.
Um, well, just to summarize exactly what Section 100B is, is that, um, our police and fire that are injured in the line of duty, um, have, have a different set of rules per se as, as maybe me or you guys because of workers' comp is what we go under. Um, what's happening to our firemen and police, though, is that if they're going, if they're retiring or going out on disability retirement from that injury, they no longer have their medical, um, expenses taken care of. They have to eat those costs. Um, they switch going from, um, the insurance that is covering them for, which is Cabot Risk with us, to their, their regular health insurance, but the health insurance picks it up and they have higher copays, whereas under the Cabot Risk policy, it's all covered. Um, we recently, I mean, have had a couple of our firemen, um, go out on disability retirement due to an injury sustained in the line of duty. And because of their retirement date, once that retirement date is set, their benefits through Cabot Risk are stopped. So, they're now retired, um, so they don't have their, you know, regular pay coming in and they're on limited income and now they have to eat the cost of their medical while they were hurt in the line of duty. 100B protects that and continues their coverage with the Cabot Risk policy, you know, we have with Threemaia, um, so that when they do retire and if, if they do retire in, you know, with an injury, that the coverage continues with them. And they're not eating those costs out of their own pockets on an injury they sustained, probably saving someone's life.
Just a question, do we, do we have, we, so we have staff right now who are affected because this wasn't passed previously?
Correct, correct, we do.
And they are currently paying out of, out of pocket for medical expenses, basically because we didn't pass this previously?
Correct, yes.
And you're sure we can't pass this?
I, I would, well, I'm...
Yes.
I think I would, in that, if it's affecting somebody right now, I, I, I think that that would qualify for an emergency measure.
I would concur.
Because this is something we should have tackled before and I'd like to have it considered that way.
Would you like, even, I had, the, the motion was already, uh, written out by the rules and ordinance. That's why, that's why I thought we were voting on it tonight. All of a sudden, we...
We were just going to...
Counselor, you can read that. If you'd like to, uh, make a, a modi-, you know, modify it as an emergency.
As an emergency for an emergency reason in public safety.
Yep, for public safety, uh, emergency, uh, I'd like to make a motion, I move that the Town Council vote to adopt MGL Chapter 100, Section B, or take any action relative to there to.
A motion has been made, is there a second? There is a second, discussion on the motion.
It has to be declared that it's an emergency motion and then it comes under emergency provisions of our charter.
The clerk will duly note that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Will they be reimbursed?
That, I don't know.
Will they be reimbursed?
Will they be in, for the out-of-pocket expenses they currently have? Um, I don't want to speak, I don't want to...
I agree.
I don't want to speak out of turn, uh, because that's something we're currently working on, whether it's something that, um, we can, we have a couple safety nets of a different, a couple different insurance policies with the town. And so, we're looking at how we can help them with those in the time being. Um, but getting the coverage is, was the number one thing that we wanted to get passed and I've already reached out to Cabot Risk, um, inquiring on, once this vote is made and accepted and adopted, will we amend our policy to be retro to cover those costs? If not, we have other policies that we're looking into to make sure that we can help them in that sense.
We want to make these people whole.
We want to make it.
That's the, that's the...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the top of the list. We're, we're getting our ducks on the road to take care of it.
Please let us know if that is the case so that we can move that as quickly as possible.
We have, we, it, it's a few individuals in question. It's, it's a, as I said, a unique situation that, um, we are trying to clear up as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Stacy.
Is this for fire and police?
100B covers both fire and police, correct. And the, the time right now is that, um, our employees that are subject to this right now are fire.
Okay. Thank you, Stacy. Appreciate it. Public comment?
President.
Yes, sir.
Tom Riley, President of Fire, again. I'm glad to hear that there's going to be a review of the zoning grant. I'm not very happy with the, the, the method by which the petition was dealt with tonight. An indefinite postponement is the equivalent of voting no for the petition. There was going to be a definitive action on the petition. The first 10 people on the petition constitute the committee for the petition. I believe there was, if the great charter would require them to be notified when the council was going to take an action. Council took an action tonight without any notification. The matter could have been referred to a committee like we talked about before, President, Vice President Bancorp talked about. We have, we were hoping that this would be, get referred to a committee so that the council could take an active role in the oversight of the review process. That, that's not going to happen. I hope the review process works, I understand the, the method that's being proposed and so forth. As far as the, the matter continuing to come up in public comment, it's come up for public comment for the last year and a half because nothing was done. If, if an action had been taken, if the proposal had been, had been voted on, if a committee had been established back in the fall of 2017, we probably wouldn't have been coming here over and over again to ask the same questions and ask the same, the same help. Uh, the, the matter doesn't have to be on the agenda constantly. If you put it, referred it to a committee, it would stay there until the committee started, thought it was proper to bring the, to bring the matter forward. But I, I, I also think it's a bad precedent. I don't think the council should be acting on any matter and saying we're going to indefinitely postpone it. Council ought to vote yes or no on matters that come before them, not hide behind an indefinite postponement. I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's appropriate. I think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a matter, I hope that this is the last time on any subject that the council takes, engages in a motion to indefinitely postpone a matter.
Tom, I, I'd like to respond to you, only, only because I know your frustration and I know everybody in this room, their frustrations about this whole zoning fiasco. But I also feel that we have direct input from the council with Peter Christopher involved in this whole review. Um, and that's why, that was the reason why I voted to indefinitely postpone it, because I feel that we are addressing the issue. Uh, what you're asking for is another separate committee to just handle the issues that are brought up in that petition. Why do we need an additional committee when we already have things in place that we can address it? That's, that's how I feel. I, I think, you know, dur- the process that we're going through right now, that's really been pushed forward with the new town manager, we are intensing, intensifying our position of looking at what's happened down the center in terms of zoning, uh, some of the inequities, um, errors that were in, in the documents, the fact that we don't have adequate maps. This whole thing is being addressed right now. That's how I feel. That's why I...
And I'll just say, um, I am on the Town Managers Committee, um, and we will be going over this and I know that all of the people in, in the committee, um, are deeply, deeply, um, committed to making the Center Business District work as well as it possibly can. There are people on that committee who I feel like are professionals in this line of work, who've done this in other communities, they're the right people to take this on. If we had tried to do this through the, through the council, I don't know if that expertise would have been, that you wouldn't have had residents of the, necessarily residents of the commit, of the neighborhood that would be represented on that committee. I know the business owners who wouldn't have been represented on that committee. And I think that doing it outside the way that it has been done previously, um, through a special committee is the way that we, um, is the right way to approach this, respectfully, of course. Um, but that's, and I think that we're on the right track with this plan and I, I, I look forward to continuing engagement, the same engagement that I have on a council committee, on the Town Managers Committee, even though it's not a direct, uh, doesn't have a direct, I guess, role in the charter. But I, I welcome any and all comment from anybody who would like to, um, to speak with me about it. Um, so, thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Public comment? There are none. Publications, uh, the Woodthorpe Chamber of Commerce has their annual Community Awards Dinner at the Cottage Park Yacht Club at 7:00 on January 26th. Um, I'll link it to any comments by the...
Comment? Yep. Two comments. Uh, one, on the, on the meeting agenda, I believe we have a meeting scheduled next week, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I just wanted to make sure on that, that everybody knows that. Also, maybe, Town Manager, any clarification? I know, I, I think a lot of people were, uh, wondering about a planning board meeting that was supposed to be, take place last night and I know at the meeting at the E.B. Newton School that they had said that they were going to postpone to December, go to January 14th. So, I knew people that had planned on going and then it was kind of canceled relatively late. Just wanted to know if you know if it, if this is going to be postponed indefinitely, that agenda item, obviously the agenda item we're talking about is the Family Dolls. Is that an item that is planned to go on, if you know or not, in the February meeting Is that an item that is planned to go on, if you know or not, in the February meeting? Or is that something that's just going to be postponed?
There are two projects. Like, one will go on in February, one will go on in March. I would like that one to go on in February. Um, that said, with that, what happened with the last meeting is that, um, there was concerns from my office about the public notice concerning the meeting. The way the agenda was originally written and what was presented to the public.
Again, your voice is going down.
Sorry. I am dressing. It's okay. Um, so the meeting for the planning board that was planned for last night, we, from my office, do not feel was publicly noticed correctly. We are working with the planning board and with, um, the council clerk on what we think a proper agenda looks like. It cannot just be new business in front of the planning board meet. We need to delineate what specific projects they're talking about and things like that. So we are trying to educate them about how we want to publicly notice these things so that the community does not feel like they're left out of the project, process with specific projects. So in that, that project and the other one that is in front of, currently in front of the planning board, um, will both happen between February and March. I believe the Family Dollar site will be in February.
What, what is the other one? Just, I'm not sure.
It's at the top of my head. There, there's.
Free Musty.
Oh, Free Musty. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
So it is, it is, uh, not to postpone indefinitely or anything like that.
Just wanted to make sure because there was some miscommunication.
It was a public noticing issue. Yeah, we, uh, we want to limit the liabilities as much as possible.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Yes. So I just wanted to make a general comment to the crowd because I hear the frustration, and you can imagine how frustrated we are as well. Like, we are working on fixing processes that were not followed for like 30-some-odd years, right? Everything that you hear tonight is like cleanup. We're cleaning up zoning, we're cleaning up, we're cleaning up motions for the police and fire, and this is another one of those things of noticing a meeting properly. So patience is a virtue. We need some patience right now while we're cleaning everything up so that we don't have to go through this three and four and five times to get it right. We'll do it once, we'll do it right, everyone will be involved, and just give us some time to get there, please.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Counselor.
Motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen.